The meeting of the Rollins Zoning Board of Appeals. Case number 18-01. The Rollins Zoning Board of Appeals will be in session on Tuesday, March 20th, 2018, at 7:00 PM at the Rollins Town Hall today for the following appeal. Jeff Apsey, doing business at Granite State Pioneer Group, PO Box 4201 Portsmouth, New Hampshire, seeking a special exception. The table 6-9 permitted use is in Section 8.1, multiple dwellings, two-family dwellings, accessory dwellings, and rentable rooms to allow for additional dwelling units at the property located at 710 Main Street, Tax Map 10, Lot 50, not by myself, on March 10th, 19 to 2018. A copy of that was posted across the Daily Democrat on Saturday, March 10th, and sent to the following list of abutters. The clerk will read the list of abutters.
So the abutters are 117 Main Street LLC, RCP LLC, PO Box 253 Greenland, New Hampshire, Anjoshy LLC, 160 State Street, Kidery, Maine, Steve Fallon, William Brown, oh, Steve Fallon, PO Box 743, William Brown, PO Box 746, Cutter Family Properties LP at PO Box 190, John Fleming, PO Box 1023 Dover, New Hampshire, John Fortier, 680 Main Street, Matthew and Shannon Gennaro, 107 Old Farm Lane, Elliott, Maine, Granite State Pioneer Group LLC, PO Box 4201 Portsmouth, Anne Marie Hebert, 476 Church Street, Thomas Howard, 470 Church Street, McLan Development Railroad Avenue, Pan Am Railways, 1700 Iron Horse Park, North Villrika, Mass., Lapka Sherpa, 9A Chandler Way, Dover, New Hampshire, Tollwood Realty Group LLC, 404 Third Street, Town of Rollinsford, PO Box 309, Jennifer Whitton, 701 Main Street.
Good members of hearing the case tonight, to my right is Howard Hammond, to his right is Harold Foss, next to him is John Hensman, next to him is Ron Shabbat, and this.
Ron Shabbat.
Paul Kehren.
And myself, Joe Carwatt. Paul Kehren is an alternate, he's not voting tonight, he's sitting in. We have to call a complete board. The complete board is present. And I'll start off by saying that the Zoning Board of Appeals is really a judiciary board, a semi-judiciary board. We don't swear in any delegates unless there's a demand to do so. I think in my 30 odd years, we've sworn in witnesses probably two or three times if we don't wear casings or anything like that, which is to assume everybody is honest. And that's, that probably would be the best way to run it. It's local judiciary for an outburst of the Superior Court, because in Superior Courts, every land use had to go to the court system, we'd bog them down. We wouldn't do it in Rollins because we don't have that many cases. So we have to, I can't call you by name even if I know you personally, and if we have to address our names so that the clerks' system can pick it up, and so when you get to speak, please state your name and so it will be assisted with the clerk. So with all of that said, the appeal has been read to you. I will read the accompanying portion that came with it. You people can get a copy of it, too. Application for special exception, response to 720 Main Street, Tax Map 10, Lot 50. On behalf of Granite State Pioneer Group and Jeff Apsey, the applicant, we are pleased to present the following project for your consideration. As many of you know, the Blue and Mill Building was an active manufacturing business until the applicant purchased the building. Granite State Pioneer Group seeks to develop the Mill Building as a mixed-use building for commercial uses on the first floor and residential apartments above. This project will greatly enhance the building inside and out, and is a wonderful opportunity for Rollins to realize the goals it set forth in its master plan in 2015. Over the last few years, Rollins has been looking at promoting economic development and attracting more residents. The master plan noted a lack of land available for commercial development, the meagre increase in populations compared to neighboring suburbs where in Dover and the consequences of being a bedroom community for those working outside the town. The master plan specifically recommended the planning board market Rollins. Updike the ordinance is to encourage private investment in downtown and work closely with the owners of mill buildings to develop such properties into mixed-use facilities provided to high-quality residences and support economic growth. In March of 2017, residents of Rollins voted to accept the planning board's proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance. The updated ordinance allows residential uses in the commercial ground district by special exception and set forth the following criteria. Commercial uses on the ground floor, residential units under two bedrooms above, and two parking spaces per unit. Thereafter, the applicant has invested substantial time and money meeting with planning board consultant John Krebs, developing appropriate plans, and submitting the project to the Rollins Planning Board. The planning board approved the site submitted for review on January 9, 2018, and approved applicant's plan. Rollins Zoning Ordinance 1132 gives the Board of Adjustment the authority to grant a special exception if core criteria are met. You're all familiar with these. The proposed site is found to be an appropriate location for such use by the planning board. As indicated above, the planning board reviewed and approved this project. City attached plan approved February 3, 2018, and planning board minutes dated January 9, 2018. So we do have, I was telling the clerk I do have these reports I have over here. The proposed use will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, will not adversely affect property values or improvements in the adjacent area. The farmer manufacturing use involved volatile organics produced and resulted in fumes emitting from the building, large trucks with deliveries over railroad avenue and employee traffic. The building was done in good condition, and when the plan was closed, the docked area presented an attractive area for crime. The proposed use results in a significant upgrade to the interior and exterior of the building. Ample parking, lighting, and landscaping is also provided. The renovation results in an entirely code-compliant building, including a handicapped entrance. For those reasons, the project will enhance the public health, safety, or welfare, will enhance property values or improvements in the adjacent area. Appropriate and adequate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. The property is served by town water install as arranged by the applicant. Additional parking was added to accommodate the combined commercial and residential use. The proposed use will comply with the applicable regulations of the district. As discussed above, the zoning ordinance was amended for the express purpose of encouraging private investment in the downtown area in mixed-use buildings. As required by the amended ordinance, the commercial use will be on the first floor. The 19 one-bedroom units will be on the upper floors. The proposed parking for the apartments is located in the rear of the building and contains 38 spaces. For the reasons above, we submit the proposal meets all the requirements of ordinance as well as the goals of the Rollins Master Plan. We respectfully request that the board grant a special exception, respectfully submitted Granite State Pioneer Group and Liberty. That's signed by Monica Kaiser or Kaiser?
Kaiser, sir.
Monica Kaiser, S. Wyer, Flumby, Hoffel, Phoenix, Gormley, and Roberts, 127 Pirate Avenue, Portsmouth, and... We have the minutes there. Do you all have the minutes? Why don't you go read through the minutes? What do you wish for me to read them? I think for the purpose of the meeting, maybe I should read them. The minutes of the planning board, these are the minutes of the planning board. The planning board is, in fact, I'm glad we got them because we couldn't have done much action tonight without a recommendation from the planning board. But they had four members present. This is their meeting on January 9, 2018. Continuation full-site plan review for modifications of the property known as the Blue and Mill Building located at 710 Main Street, Tax Map 10, Lot 50, by Jeff Apsey, applied Chauncey Creek Road, Kidery, Maine. Mr. Apsey gave the report a status update on his proposed plans. He had met with civil consultants to review his drainage plans, specifically drainage at the front of the site. He said that his civil consultants were not entirely comfortable commenting on the drainage. The town had asked Oil Tanner and Associates to review the plan. Harold L. Chance of Oil Tanner and Associates presented the review of his firm did of Mr. Apsey's plan. He said that he was familiar with the conditions presented at the site, having assessed the town's existing drainage system at some point earlier. He said that while the town does have long-term capacity issue due to existing infrastructure, he felt that, well, you could not say we're 100% sure it'd increase runoff for Mr. Apsey's site would be problematic to the town, he ultimately did not feel that it would. The board and Mr. L. Chance had a general discussion about alternate solutions to the drainage capacity issue of Mr. Apsey's site. By law, these solutions were deemed either unfeasible, cost prohibitive, or else aesthetically uncycline in relation to the real positive impact of these solutions. Mr. Haines noted that the parking lot had existed on the site for a while and had not caused any issues, and also that Mr. Apsey was not looking to expand the parking lot substantially. Mr. Krebs added that losing any particular space would negatively impact Mr. Apsey's proposed renovation project. Mr. Ali asked if potential problems might only occur during significant weather events. Mr. L. Chance replied that he could not say for sure. Mr. Apsey then pointed out changes made to the plan in response to the review by his civil consultants, which included additional curving to slow runoff and the length of walkway connecting the town sidewalk to the parking lot. The board discussed the walkway, and most board members felt that it should be removed for a variety of reasons, aesthetics, maintenance, and liability. Mr. Hensman reopened at the public hearing at 7:30 PM. There were no comments from the public. Mr. Hensman closed the public hearing at 7:35 PM. Mr. Rolos proposed a motion to accept the plans as complete. Mr. Haines seconded the motion, and the board unanimously approved the motion. Mr. Krebs said that he felt that all the waivers requested by Mr. Apsey were valid. Mr. Haines proposed a motion to approve all the waivers requested by Mr. Apsey, which are as follows. Article 3, Section 4, Mr. Apsey is proposing 1.1 parking spaces per dwelling unit. Article 3, Section 5C, Mr. Apsey is proposing parking space dimensions of 9 feet by 18 feet. Article 3, Section 5A, Mr. Apsey is requesting a minimum aisle width of 23.5 feet. Article 3, Section 10, Mr. Apsey is requesting no provisions for retention of stormwater runoff on the south side of the proposed parking lot, the side that faces the mill. Mr. Rolos seconded the motion, and the board unanimously approved the motion. Mr. Haines proposed a motion to approve the application for the site conditions listed below, the six conditions listed below. All outstanding fees be paid to civil consultants and Oil Tanner and Associates, Plan Note 6, be amended to 23.5. On the plan, correct spelling error stripped to strike. 4, remove proposed sidewalk from final plan. 5, change the retaining wall note to reflect a proposed barrier or guard rail, replacing the existing note proposing a handrail. Add a note to the plan proposing either a retaining wall of a greater slope, where a retaining wall is currently proposed, butting the parking lot. Mr. Rolos seconded the motion, and the board unanimously approved the motion. Approval of proposed stormwater regulations for new construction. Mr. Rolos said that J. Stephens of Civil Consultants had reviewed the proposed regulations and had advised the board to add them to the site and subdivision regulations as an addendum. Mr. Rolos proposed a motion to adopt the regulations as addendum C to both the site and subdivision regulations. Mr. Haines seconded the motion, and the board unanimously approved the motion. Otherwise, it's approval of the minutes. Mr. Haines proposed a motion to approve the minutes for the January 9, 2018 meeting. Mr. Ali seconded the motion, and the board unanimously approved the motion. Correspondence, no correspondence available. Mr. Rolos proposed a motion to adjourn the meeting. Mr. Haines seconded the motion, and the board unanimously approved the motion. Mr. Hensman adjourned the meeting at 7:56 PM. The next regular meeting of the planning board will be held on March 6, 2018, at 7:00 PM at the Rollins Town Hall. You expect to submit a statement at 7:07. Those are the minutes of the planning board which I was awaiting, that we have them tonight, and we've read them, they're recorded. Did I omit anything, really?
No, I think you're spot on.
Before we go to the board for questions, I'm going to ask the applicant. Can you make a presentation if you will? I have a few questions.
Sure. I'm Michael Katsouris. I read the narrative that you just read, and with me is Jeff Apsey. You're welcome to address your questions to me, and if I need to, I cannot get Jeff to help. You can sit up here, sir.
I was concerned somewhat about the safety and security. Have you been in touch with the fire department, the fire chief?
Yeah, I've been in touch with the fire chief. I gave him a full set of plans. I've contacted, I've emailed him, called him, and he's aware of what's going on. I wanted to do a review with him, like a technical review. Obviously, if I could do other fire systems, I want to get them right, seize the authority. Fire in her bathroom. I'd love to talk to him, let's see.
To be clear, Jeff, you have to start here to get your building permit before you start building, right?
Select board issues building permits.
Okay. And do you have that yet?
I don't have a building permit for the whole project. Got some small permits for demolition and joint portions.
Right. But ultimately, your fire safety stuff is all going to be reviewed in that process?
Yeah, right, exactly. I could pull the permit, and then before it gets installed, just for my own, you know, kind of protection, I would want to have him weigh in on it. So that's the building portion of the...
Yeah, see, the reason for this is a little bit, it's a hundred percent different than the last time you were here. I mean, now you've got a residential unit.
Right.
And you're dealing with human lives here also. And so I think it would be wise for us to have something to guarantee you possibly from litigation probably in the future, if something should happen.
Well, yeah, I hired a licensed architect to do the plans, so all the plans are done by a licensed architect, and they're insured and licensed, and it's all code compliant. So all the plans meet the regulations, all the building code and life safety regulations.
Can you provide us with a copy of that?
Yeah, I think they're in your package. They're...
You've got this stuff here?
Yeah, those are the plans, and she's a licensed architect. She does a lot of commercial projects and makes these projects.
The page looks like this. A lot of small fine print on it.
And I think she has signed the plan, so the town has two full-size copies on file that are signed by her in stamp with her engineer's stamp.
The town has a copy on file?
The town has two copies, and Tom Clark has reviewed them, but he has a stamp, it's got her architect's stamp on it. These aren't stamped, I don't believe, but the town copies are stamped.
Okay. Can anybody update that?
Yeah.
With this ridiculous element that...
Yes.
Mr. Rolos?
They're here.
The town has a copy?
Yes, two copies.
Two of them. Okay. All right, I think they're one. About the water district, the sewer district, do we have a recommendation from them?
Yeah, the water and sewer district, I've met with them twice, and they said there's no problem with the capacity. They had their engineer look at it. I've negotiated with them, and we've come up with a price, so I've agreed to pay them a fee per unit. So that's all part of the conditions of the agreement. Obviously, they're not going to give me water until I pay those fees.
Can they give you that in writing?
She has given me that in writing. She emailed me, and I can get the board a copy, but she did confirm that it's all good as long as I pay the fees, you know, per unit, per unit fees.
I thought we'd see you at church tomorrow, I'm sure she gets it.
Okay, yeah.
We should have a copy of that, too.
Sure, yeah, I'm sorry.
Their recommendation, they're getting a copy of you.
Yeah, I should have given you a copy. You know, honestly, I think the email was regarding the fees. I don't know if it was talking about the capacity, but I did meet with the board, and he confirmed the engineer was at both meetings, and he did confirm that there's no problem with the capacity, but...
Okay, meeting next Tuesday anyway.
Yeah.
But we can, there was no problems?
There was no problem whatsoever, yeah, and they'll confirm that.
I think we would want a copy of that, though. When we get it, then. So we could have that exhibit A in the water district. And the last concern I had, because I've lived here for eighty-some odd years, you know, I can tell you when the mill traffic used to park inside the road all the way to the town hall, because in front of my house, and so the land has changed quite often in the last four generations. Have you had a traffic study made?
I haven't had a traffic study. It wasn't a requirement, but if you...
How many is it, yeah?
But if you look at the plan, because we've mixed, you know, we've done residential, commercial mix, so you have, you think about it, you have different parking at different times of the day, business parking more during the day, and then evening is residential parking primarily. That's kind of the, you know, that's the formula. So granted, there may be more occupancy in the building because, you know, I think there was fifty, something like fifty employees at Blue and?
It was congested.
Yeah, something like that, fifty to fifty-five, and it was fully operating, and they were full-on, you know, pumping a lot of stuff out of there. So now, we, you know, if that building was full based on my plan, you would have a little more occupancy, but because you have residential now, it's not all commercial where everybody would just be slamming the place at once. You have the residential people in the evening more, that's more intense, so that shared use kind of spreads out the traffic.
And for your first floor, are you going to be using the rear of the building for your ingress and egress?
The way we set it up is the back of the building would be more the residential use. We wanted to try to, like, avoid the trucking on railroad avenue and kind of move away from that. So if you look at the, you know, because it's a slow fly, it makes more sense for the tenants to access from the back, and they only have to walk up three flights of stairs, and that's the new entrance. So that's going to be a brand-new stairwell, all code compliant, handicapped accessible. The stairwell that's in the building now is very mill-style, you know, tight, you know, not to code at all, so that we're going to build a new stairwell for the people to use and most of the public, that's much more conducive to, you know, walking and safer. And that will be where most of the tenants enter, because it's only a three-flight walk-up. So then if you look at the front of the site, that parking would be more for the commercial first-floor use, you know, first, second-floor use.
The elevator will be freight?
The elevator is a freight elevator. So, yeah, it's usable for freight. It's a material lift, basically, but we didn't put an elevator in there, only one-bedroom apartments, so we felt, you know, it's not like a family situation where people are going to have a lot of groceries and things like that. That's why we kept the bedrooms low, so that there wouldn't be a lot of occupancy, like a lot of people living in units which would require more materials and use and...
In the case of an emergency, like, how could they exit the building?
Well, because they had to be all code compliant and meet all the life safety requirements, there's two stairwells, one on each end of the building. They're both fire-rated, so our new stairwell that we're building, brand-new, is a two-hour rating, so that gives people two hours to get out, and that meets all the life safety codes. The building and the stairwell in the back we're going to keep, but we're going to upgrade it, make it a one-hour stairwell, which complies with the life safety codes. So either you go up the back, which is a one hour to get out, you go up the front, that's a two-hour rating. The whole building is going to have a new sprinkler system installed, so the sprinkler will be fully functional, and a fire alarm, which it didn't have, full fire alarm, monitored, you know, fire extinguishers.
My main concern with the fire chief.
Everything's too code.
Never fire along that building.
No, they wouldn't do it. The old tenant, I talked to her about it, she's like, "We don't want to keep that." I said, "Why?" "You're talking about a couple's lives. That's going to get done."
Okay.
Any other questions? I have a question, if I may. L. Chance. While we're talking about a mixed-use building, we talked about the apartments. What are you going to have for the rest of the commercial part of it? What do you plan on putting in there?
I don't really know. I don't have a tenant, so I'm just trying to clean it up, maybe create the space. I've opened it up, I've removed all the partitions, and then somebody would come in and potentially fit it up themselves, you know, for the use.
What is the potential for the number of businesses is what I'm asking specifically?
Well, you have roughly, probably eighteen, maybe like sixteen thousand max, commercial space. I would say more, like fifteen, when you take out stairwells and areas that can't be inhabited, then bathrooms and things like that, because we're adding, you know, new bathrooms. So you're talking maybe like conservatively fourteen to fifteen thousand square feet. You could use that for office, you could use it for retail, you could use it for, you know, manufacturing, which I don't, I really don't want to promote that, that's what the building used to be, but that's not, that's kind of not my thing as a landlord. I like to do, you know, a building with more public access, so I like to have, you know, maybe businesses where people come in, get to enjoy the building, or retail where people can come in and shop or buy something, maybe, you know, more uses like that where there's more activity and vibrancy, and the building isn't just closed off to the public.
Because I would have a real problem if you put in a, you know, some kind of loud business downstairs or some kind of manufacturing where there are fumes and noises.
Yeah. That's not my thing, that's what, actually, the old tenant, that's what they did, they used to pump, they would pump the fumes up the side of that building with a fan. I mean, I couldn't even walk in there, honestly, I couldn't even take it, and they had people working there, it was crazy. So that's just not my thing. You know, I like to do smaller units and try to maybe make, get multiple people in there, so you have more mix and more small business kind of oriented type of uses.
So no heavy manufacturing? So no heavy manufacturing?
Yeah, that's not, yeah, it's, I'm putting, I'm making the building nice. So, I mean, I would put that in writing if you want, no heavy manufacturing. Not that, you know, it's probably part of this process, but it's not going to happen. And I've actually, you know, spent a lot of money upgrading the floors, painted, doing nicer finishes, kind of making the building more modern and more kind of, you know, inviting, like added a lot of light, things like that which aren't heavy manufacturing, but we did upgrades, you know?
The last time you met with this board, you specifically said you were going to have all commercial condos when you required your variance for your solar panels. There was never any mention of residential property at all. So I'm kind of curious, what brought this change about since then?
Well, when we got into the planning process of really looking at the building, like when I sat down with the architect, number one was the parking. We didn't have the parking to make the building all commercial. So that was huge because I know parking is a real, really pushes these, you know, projects. That was one thing. We only have so much land and we knew we could only build up so much because we had to do all new drainage and all kinds of retention, things like that. Keep the open space, you know, which is required. So then we looked into options. The other, the other thing with the commercial was, we felt if we did all commercial, it would hinder our ability to get good tenants on the upper floors because you're talking five flights of stairs. You've got to run a business and make your employees walk up five flights of stairs, which is unbelievable.
Were you willing to make your tenants walk up five flights of stairs?
No, actually, if you do the residential, it's only on the upper three. So they only have, the most anybody will ever walk is three flights of stairs.
The upper three?
Because they enter from the backside?
That's one floor up from the bottom, correct?
Uh, it's actually six stories, so the...
No, no, if you enter from the back on ground level?
But you wouldn't be, all the residential people would be entering from the back lot. They won't even be able to come in from the front.
Correct. But that's one floor above the front level, wasn't it?
It's six, six stories.
No, he's asking when, if I'm a resident and I'm walking into the building through the back door, what floor am I coming in at?
Third.
Third, so it's two floors at grade level from the front to the back?
Yeah, so, yeah, if you hit it from the front, you'd go up two flights of stairs to be on the third. So you're going to now hit it on the third.
No, that's not. There's two floors difference in the height from the back to the front?
Yes, so when you walk in the...
Is there, but it's a six-story building.
Right, so when you walk in on the front, when you walk in the front?
Right.
Where the commercial tenants are going to walk in, you're walking in on the ground floor, which is also the first floor?
Right.
And if I wanted to go out, the back residence entrance, would I walk up two flights and then go out on the third floor?
If you wanted to go to the third floor, you'd walk up two flights of stairs and then you'd be on the third floor.
And that's the entrance to the back parking lot, the residence entrance?
Yeah, that's the residential entrance. So the most anybody is going to walk up is three flights of stairs.
So what he's asking you is, there's a two-flight difference, a two-story difference between the two entrances.
Two flights of stairs, yeah, but it's actually three floors if you count the third as a third floor.
Sure.
But two, yeah, right.
Two flights of stairs.
Two flights of stairs.
You're giving the names pretty well.
But as I said, the commercial access will be from the, you know, the lower entrance. So I wouldn't, you know, the tenant's maximum would be, commercial people won't be going up to the apartments.
No, the application that you provided, you said in here, retail's first and second, office third, in nineteen apartments. This doesn't say the same thing. This says use of the first floor and residential apartments above.
I'm sorry, that's just a general statement of the criteria. I apologize. I think on the...
Well, we read this in tonight and...
I understand. They are above the commercial, but I didn't specify in my narrative which floor they were on.
Clarification of that, Joe?
But if you, I'm happy to let the plan's control.
The two pieces of paper actually don't agree.
Sure.
All right, so how do I work it?
My letter's correct, actually. That's the way.
So this is correct?
Yep. My letter is incorrect.
So this is incorrect?
That is incorrect.
You click at that?
I think she was reading something.
It's incomplete in that it doesn't specify where above the apartments are. I think one apartment, the handicap accessible apartment is on the third floor?
Yeah, so as I said in my letter, the third floor is office. But there is, to make the building ADA compliant, we had to put one apartment on the ADA accessible floor. So there is one apartment going in on the third floor. The rest of it would just be office. And then fourth, fifth, and sixth floors are all residential. So that's the configuration.
I'd like to touch on one more thing, shared parking. If I'm your tenant and I come home, whether I work the second shift or I work days and I come home, some of these are my parking points, what happens to me?
Well, they're not designated parking spots.
So it's open parking for everybody?
Open parking, yeah.
So if the parking lot's full and I live there, where do I park?
Then you would go down to the front and use the front lot because the businesses would be gone at that point when you come home. There's most of them.
Say I come home at noon time?
At noon time, the chances of that lot being full unless there was a party or something going on are highly unlikely because most people are busy during the day.
How many spaces are you actually missing to complete it? That's a pretty good-sized backyard back there.
There's forty spaces in the back?
Thirty-seven, right?
Well, I'm looking at...
Did you do the handicap?
Yeah, well, yeah, I think I counted them all. There's twelve here, there's twelve here, there's three here, six here, and seven here. So twelve, twenty-four, thirty-six, thirty-seven, because that's thirteen, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty spaces in the back. And then I think there is eight, twelve...
At least forty, there'd be twenty-two, because I think we provided sixty-two.
Yeah.
But if you look at my lot lines, I mean, I'm pretty maxed out. I'm right to the property line, to the property line, to the property line, to the property line. This is my green space and this is actually a basement, so we had to leave this open. So a green space, not a lot of options, you know, pretty much.
So you're talking nineteen apartments, correct?
Nineteen, correct.
So the minimum would be one person, maybe a couple living there?
Yeah, you'd probably average, yeah, maybe average it, but yeah.
I would say any couple's going to have two vehicles.
Oh, totally. In this day and age, I agree.
Okay, so even if, even if we're talking that, I mean, in nineteen, you're looking at thirty vehicles roughly with just the apartments and that's only saying that half of them have got two vehicles. So, I mean, I just don't see where everybody's going to go.
I provided sixty-two spots. So like, let's say your example, thirty car, you know, that's a fair estimate, I think.
Well, I'm being on a real conservative side, actually.
Yeah, that's fair. I mean, they're one-bedroom apartments, but yeah, so say thirty cars. So right back here, we have forty spots. So that would be ten extra spots. And as I said, if it's the evening and everybody's home and even if they got people coming over, you've got all this as overflow and it's all lit. It's all going to be, you know, lit parking, so it's safe.
And the planning board approved your parking?
The planning board has approved your parking.
And I guess I would just sort of highlight for you that one of the things that's notable about this plan is that the applicant hasn't expand, it's not like they've expanded on the building footprint at all. I mean, the building is the building. It is what it is. It's got the six floors. The only thing they've added is this area over here to do a better set of stairs to code, correct?
The stairwell, yeah, if you look at the slash area, that's new.
That's the only new area at all. So this is in a situation where the applicants come in and they have really overbuilt or built in areas where there wasn't a building before. So in terms of the space and the open space was a requirement that you had to meet?
Yeah, open space is a requirement and we basically took the building that we had and just tried to come up with best use for it. And that was the plan.
You know, and this sort of goes back to, you know, the master plan process and some of the vision that people who authored that had. And so what you're trying to do is you're trying to say, how can we, you know, utilize this business, this area in the downtown, get some commercial use, no heavy manufacturing on the lower fours, provide some high-quality residences above. I mean, these are the types of things that people have wanted. And so, you know, you can, the parking spaces have to be a certain size. And I know that you got some consideration about, you know, configuring them, the way you configured them and some of the sizes. It doesn't seem that there's any way to jam anymore in there.
Mr. Askey, the small rectangular above the front parking, is that where your offices are going to be? That's where Mr. Bluen's offices were?
Oh, okay. No, I remember. So you were in the building when Bluen was there?
I'm in the office.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I'm in the dungeon.
He was on the second floor.
Yeah.
I haven't proposed anything for the second floor. It's just going to be open floor plan.
Okay.
The third floor is where you'll see on your plans that I gave you.
The office, okay.
Office, yeah. I put two office units there. The handicap apartment is right in this corner, closest to the ramp, two offices and second...
The third floor, same location?
Third floor, yeah. So you come in here, go up the new ramp, in the new stair, oh, sorry. I'm sorry. You come up here, new ramp into the building, new entrance, and then you go here and handicap apartment here, two offices here. But Bluen's office was on the second floor, which is right below that. That doesn't exist anymore. All that nice woodwork is ripped out.
Yeah, there were times where he was having as many as three or four trucks a day to mail all his packages because he had something against UPS and FedEx and everything went by mail. If you knew, if you knew Mr. Bluen and Cattle, you'd argue with him. He wouldn't have been at his premises. So I was, I've been in it often, yeah. So one of the good things is the back, you didn't have the hot-ton that, are you, in the back?
Uh, yes, this is...
Are you?
This is actually all pavement.
Here?
Okay.
It's just that the best way to provide parking is to save us, you know, for soil removal and...
That's near too much.
Yes, this is all pavement and then this is pavement down here.
Yeah, that's...
Currently, that's already pavement, but we are adding this pavement.
It used to be two houses there.
So we had to go through extensive, you know, planning and drainage and engineering. But we got that all sorted out. We get the water taken care of.
I was concerned with safety, but, you know, I would, no trucks that used to come by railroad Ave. That was really just an accident waiting to happen.
A lot of truck drivers gave it...
That's one house away from mine. And it never did happen, but it was just waiting. You know, you're over all the time.
Sure. And that's one of the things that we think will be eliminated with, if it's not going to be...
General Stalin wearing room four, there's an accident waiting to happen there. It's going to happen someday because people just drive too fast.
Yeah, it's tight.
They're behind me, they creep up on me because I only go forty-five miles an hour.
Yeah, it's tight there. I don't know, I mean, I'm prepared, I don't like going there, so...
The downtown, no, I don't know. I, I think it's going to be a little safer than it was back then with the trucks. The trucks always went in the back end.
Yeah, yeah, there was, while you remember, because when you worked there, it was the five-day doors.
Right.
So those were the loading dock doors.
Right.
So we moved the loading dock to the front where it's easier access. And then just left the one loading dock in the back for small items, small, you know, small trucks, something like that. But we, basically, I took all those loading dock doors and turned them into sliding glass doors. Still let light in the building.
Anything else?
Yeah, I got a couple more. Well, you mentioned you're going to sprinkle the building. How do you plan on pressurizing the sprinkling system?
I, there was a sprinkler in the building, actually.
What was it supplied from?
Uh, it's got its own, it's funny that there's, the main of the building comes in like off of McConstruction lot. That's where the main comes in. But it looks, it seems to me there's another main that comes in on a T. Because if you look at the main street side of the building, there's a riser with the shut-off.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure where you're getting your pressure because even though I want a tower, I mean, when you get to the sixth floor, I mean, it's probably, it might drip out. I don't think it would do anything else.
Yeah, the guy, the guy looked at it, the sprinkler guy, he said, "Yeah, it's pretty good pressure." He was surprised. I think they might have dropped another main into that building. I don't know who did it. It must have been Bluen because it probably caused the...
Which boosted the pressure?
The size, just the volume, you know what I mean? It must be the volume of the pipe. It's like an eight-inch pipe coming into that building. Cast iron Bluen must have done it just to provide a sprinkler. I mean, it's a massive, massive system. So we're going to incorporate that pressure that we already have in the volume. And then, but they're going to go all new because it's going to be monitored and, you know, zone valves. So when the fire chief gets to the front entrance, there's a digital panel. He knows right where the fire is, he knows what floor it's on, he knows all the information he needs to know. That's the way to do it right. You know, that's what most times require.
In ADA, you're not going to go anything above the third floor? There's going to be no elevator for somebody that we needed?
No, the ADA will be the whole third floor.
And nothing higher?
Well, and then also the first floor, because if you look at the plan, we've got ADA spots right by this entrance.
Correct.
So this floor, ADA, and then the whole third floor. So basically, when you do a mixed-use project, every use of the project needs ADA complacency. So it's residential, so that's why the apartment goes on the third floor.
The one.
One, but that's how you comply. And then it's commercial, so that's why that floor also has commercial use. So now you're in compliance of the regulations.
I just want to count a couple of things with the board and I'm not here to represent the planning board. So what I'm going to say is my recollection of what happened to the planning board and that I want every individual on the panel of the board to make up their own mind about this project. But I do want to say that Mr. Askey appeared for us a number of times and I do want to address some of the concerns that were brought up and resolved, addressed by the committee for the planning board. One is that there was concern about, you know, if you look in the lower right-hand corner of the building, it's hard to see where the shrubs are, there was a concern about the water. You know, the water coming off the parking lot and in the pavement. And an engineer, I can't remember his name, came in and talked about the fact that that was the best way to address the water, the way it's set up. And we did invite the road agent, but as you folks may know, the road agent recently resigned and the new board didn't feel that he could come in to talk about whether there had been a past history of water flow from that property down the street. But he didn't feel that he could make an analysis of that, but we did think about that. The other thing we thought about was the light bleed, you know, across the street and in the back. And Mr. Askey brought in a light study and, of course, he's got the dual, he's got a way between not wanting to flood lights on the residential, you know, sections along with having to provide security for people using the parking lot. So we think that, and my recollection, again, I'll be careful what I say, is that he tried to weigh that as best he could. The biggest sticking issue, I think, as the board discussed, was the issue of parking. Because the fact that he had to get waivers for the parking is, under the ordinances, as I understand it, he would have, this does not, would not have met the number of parking required. And in particular, he downsized the size of the space, okay? And one of the, and to tie into Mr. Shabat's comment is, so I think that there could be an issue about, you know, the residential tenants not having parking. And one of the things that was discussed, I believe, is that, you know, if he has unhappy residential tenants, they might go renew their leases.
Correct.
And to Mr. Shabat's point, it would seem to me that he wouldn't want to put heavy manufacturing in a place where the residential tenants are key to it. But I do want to emphasize that, again, this is my understanding and my recollection, I looked at the board, is that he could come back in the future, before the planning board, and change the upper limits to, I believe, commercial use if the residential use did not work out. So I think he came before the board at least three times and had a number of studies done. And that, again, I'm not, I'm not here to try to persuade the members, but just to kind of address the fact that a lot of thought and revamping of visions went into the plan. And so, and I do, you know, I think that some of the points you make are very, you all make a... the points you make are very, you all make are very interesting about the, you know, the water pressure that frankly didn't, didn't occur to me, um, but I guess that's the end of my comments.
What I just wanna mention, too, is, you look at the home sitting up here on, on the hill, um, they've actually, I think, got a boost pump in there, just-
Up on Spoon Street.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, she did, she spent some money to put a booster in, yes.
So, I mean, what brings in questions, if we look at the height of the tank, you know, and, oh, wait a minute, yeah, might one be, be a little bit higher than the other, and I mean, you get to this point, where are you gonna have?
An interesting issue, and I, and I brought this up in a very, very different project, is, and what I was informed by, by, by more informed members of the planning board, was that water pressure and usage is not a reason for giving the, the thumbs up or down to a plan.
I hate to think what happened, it was right about there.
Well, and if, if someone thinks that, if, probably thinks that I'm misrepresenting that, so, um, that's what I understand, is that properly jurisdictionally before a planning board is, is water.
Wow, okay.
But that's my understanding, and if, I see Mr. Rollins in the audience, or Mr. Krebs wanna comment on that, I'd be happy to hear it.
I know that, and with my involvement with the American Legion, we, one person we're afraid of is, is the fire chief. They control pretty well your water suppression, um, request requirements. May I address, uh, Mr. Krebs, uh, what, what, what do you think about, uh, the fire suppression system? Does it sit in the hands of the fire?
Yeah, I mean, we, we, you know, we, we would defer to probably a combination of the fire chief and Tom Clark to, you know, to make sure that whatever the system that, that is required has adequate pressure, whether they have to have booster pumps, or, or what, I can't tell you, but without adequate pressure in that sprinkler system, he's not gonna be able, be able to occupy the, occupy the building, and I'm sure they're gonna do flow tests on the sprinkler system to make sure it's adequate.
Yeah.
So, I, you know, I, I don't know how it's gonna be overcome, I don't know if there's enough head pressure coming into the building, or if they have to boost it, and if they have to boost it, that's, you know.
That, that's one of those issues that's, uh, that, that changes from location to location to location. In Manchester, the three American Legion posts had to put in suppression systems, all of us went broke, every one of them, uh, some authority was forced to put in, of course, and wrongs are a way ahead of them, because we're, we're keeping up with the system, it's a goal system, uh, but, uh, uh, for some reason or another, it seems to be that's a jurisdiction of the, uh, yeah, we had to have something in writing, and I don't know what the chief could put in there, maybe that the appellate is, is pursuing, uh, the adequate suppression system, fire suppression, and if you could get that for us, I think I'd be comfortable with something like that, with his signature, if you could do that, with exhibit A, that it might be, be quite, yeah, that would, I think, would probably be satisfying, he can get a clear-cut answer from it.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, sir, I forgot your name.
Oh, John Krebs.
At what point during this whole process would, would the fire suppression system come up?
Again, you know, the, the planning board is dealing with, with, you know, site planning issues, you know, site distance, uh, the adequacy of parking, layout of parking, um, a lot of, you know, and I, and I, and I don't wanna say this, but I, I guess I will, the planning board has a very difficult time getting, ever getting, uh, feedback from the fire department, and we have waited on project after project after project, month after month after month.
Understand, too, we're also looking at a volunteer fire department.
Absolutely, and I'm not, I'm not saying, suggesting, you know, I, I understand that, uh, my point is that, uh, as I said earlier, if we weren't passing the buck, or we weren't pushing the ball around the field, we were simply saying, fire suppression is a building code issue, in order to get a building permit, they're gonna have to satisfy the fire chief and the building inspector that they have adequate pressure.
Ah, yeah, if, if I was in his place, I think I'd wanna make sure before I got too far involved, that I wasn't gonna run into a major roadblock.
And one was, and I'm, I mean, this isn't, I, I, I don't know Jeff well, but I, I know this isn't his first project, I'm assuming he's, he's made that determination that he can make the sprinkler system work, I'm sure he's had a, you know, a fire suppression company in there to, to, to look at the system.
Yes, yes.
Oh, yeah, to answer your question, I've had a guy look at it, but you're, you're correct, he didn't verify, you know what I mean, he looked, he said, ah, it should be good, it had a sprinkler system, but until they get in there and actually do it, you don't know, so, at that point, then, this is gonna cost me some money, and that's really what it comes down to, and then-
I, I hold out in agree with you.
Yeah, and then, you know, I gotta take one on the chin, but, you know, usually these guys won't tell ya till they get into the job.
I think any of us up here would feel horrible if we said yes, and come to find out, God forbid, something awful happened, and there was no sprinkler system.
Well, no, I, I would get a CO, yeah, it ain't gonna happen, there, there's-
There's gonna be one.
Yeah, that, yeah, it has, it's-
He's not gonna get occupied too far.
It's a requirement, and there's, these guys can do anything, right? They can put pumps as big as they need to get the pressure they want, if, that's not an issue, and there's no way I would ever be allowed to let anybody in that building without all the fire safety conditions met, and Tom Clark is on that, uh, if the fire chief, you know, obviously, would weigh in on that also, he, he would, yeah, it'll get done right.
I think what I would add similar to what, um, Mr. Hinsman added, was just that the plans call for, um, they specify all the various requirements that need to be met in terms of life safety, um, and the, no one's asking you to take on the building inspector's role in this regard, there will be somebody who has to come, grant the permit, reviewing each and every plan, and there will be somebody who comes and inspects and, and tests these things, including the fire department, so, what we're asking you to look at is, is the use, the parking, um, and does it comply with the newly amended zoning requirements? I, I mean, not to say that the concerns are invalid, I'm just saying, don't take on maybe more than, than you need to at this stage, there's gonna be a whole other set of requirements and conditions.
It's safe to say, it's safe to say that the, uh, the safety of the, uh, the residents eventually would be taken care of, uh, and we'll have that in writing, and we'll have that from, in exhibit A, from the fire chief, and, uh, I'm willing to live with that, because I've done it with, with American Legion posts all over the state, but not every community is the same, not every community is the same, and eventually, in the occupancy rates, the occupancy permits, uh, the, the selectors will have the final say.
Correct.
We come back down, all the work the planning board has done, of course, we haven't done very much, because we're just, uh, we should put our words on there and act as judges, but that's really what we are, but, you know, some of us have lived there a long time, and, uh, we have to let our sentiments go back, or aside, because I see streetcars come up here like, uh, my mother and father did.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Shabat's question.
I, I believe that we've heard just about everything, that we, we've covered every angle of this, uh, is it possible that we could move to a vote at this point?
Yeah, I, I, I'd like to have two motions, uh, one, I, I would accept the motion that we, uh, we use as exhibit A, a report from the fire chief, that would include, uh, plans for the fire suppression, somebody will go to make that motion, and second, I think it'd be nice for-
I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made, and second, if I'm Mr. Alontrae, uh, second, if I say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it, and then I think exhibit B would be to get a report from the one district, in, in writing, and I think it would be a, a simple process, but, but, here we go, it's, uh, it's, it's something that should be addressed, it's, uh, one of our requirements for variances, and I would, uh, accept a, a motion for the same.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Shabat?
I'll second that motion, I'll say-
Mr. Hammond, uh, seconded, Alontrae, say aye?
Aye.
No opposed, the ayes have it, that's exhibit B. That's it, it would be included with the minutes, is that, is that a hardship to you, sir?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, now we're going to be voting then, on.
Go public comment.
Oh, yes, 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 the public. Anybody got anything to say, yes, sir?
Steve Ballen?
Yes, Steve.
Railroad Avenue, you need my few months?
I can, I can.
Uh, I actually have a, a few issues that I'd like to bring to the attention of the board, uh, the, uh, zoning board, um, the primary one being traffic on Railroad Avenue, uh, as it is right now, there are only four residences that use that for traffic to park, uh, off the street, um, my, South Beach, one of them, uh, John Ford here, he has his entrance to the driveway off of Railroad Ave, there's some parking across the street from me, and there's a single stall on the corner there at Main Street, um, the street, I don't know if any of you are familiar with Railroad Avenue, it's a very narrow street, it's pretty rutted up right now, uh, and one of the things that I saw during the winter is that people were parking cars over at the end of the street, and the plows are having to go around them, um, I don't know what the situation was with that, but, the street is only paved two-thirds of the way, and then the final third of the way, just past my property, or just past my, uh, driveway, is, uh, actually just dirt, like the current parking lot is beyond the building. So, one of the things that, as you guys were talking about drainage, it just came up, is that if he paves that parking lot, as it is right now, we have big puddles of standing water on Railroad Avenue, because the, uh, storm drain runoff is completely clogged with sand, and there is none, it just dissipates off to the sides, or it gets splashed out, and the area around Mambo cover in the, in the middle of the street is constantly deteriorating from the traffic, so, if they put in a paved parking lot, and some of that rain runoff comes onto Railroad Ave now, now we've got potential flooding situation there, um, the other thing is that we currently have on-street parking, it's, there's no posted signs saying that you cannot park on Railroad Avenue, so if you have guests that find that the parking lot is full, and they park on Railroad Avenue, that would, again, severely narrow down to the point, if you had a car parked at each side, there's no way two cars could pa- uh, pass each other on Railroad Avenue, it'd be down to a single lane of traffic, and God forbid, there's some kind of emergency and they have to come through there with a fire truck, that would severely hinder them, um, the sidewalk situation there doesn't exist, so, I have a son that's confined to a wheelchair, and currently, for him to make the hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-foot trek from our driveway to the little store at the top of the hill there, he has to go into the street, 'cause there is no sidewalk, so my concern is that if he's making that trek, and someone's coming home from work, and they're distracted or whatever, he's a prime target in that drive, in that, uh, street there, uh, I have not pursued anything as far as looking into how feasible it is to expand the street, or provide sidewalks on there for people to walk, um, but given the fact that he, uh, the, uh, proposed tenant of the building is going to, or the owner of the building is going to provide parking in the back and access from the back, I'm curious how those people would now go to maybe a little store, or to the post office or something, if they'd have to egress all the way down through the first floor out that way, or if they would come to the parking lot and come down Railroad Avenue, because they would find the same situation as my son would, is that there's nowhere for them to go, if two cars are coming, one car's leaving, the other car's coming, there's nowhere to go, uh, they're already touching the sides of the road, so, those are the issues that concern me, uh, and I think they would concern other tenants, and they, or other owners of other, other budding properties, if they attended tonight, um, that's the primary thing, the traffic, and the condition of the road, the drainage, no sidewalks, um, and I just hope you take those things into consideration when you make your decisions.
Mr. Chairman, Shabat, you have a select board member here, if he'd like to comment on that, Mr. Rollins?
Sure, all those issues are, were planning board issues, and were addressed by the planning board, they're in the planning board process, they're not really, um, as I said, they're not really issues for tonight, um, if there's parking on, parking on Railroad Avenue, they were illegally parked, 'cause there's no parking on streets at night, so they should have been towed, so, next time that happens, let the police department know and we'll tow them, um-
That's a, pardon, that's seasonal, right?
Um, there are no plans to put in sidewalks, and I think the applicant indicated during the planning board process that he was gonna be paving the entire, paving the end of Railroad Avenue, so that shouldn't be an issue either, so, and the rest of Railroad Avenue is part of the ten-year highway plan that the select board has developed, I don't know what year Railroad Avenue is slated, but, um, every road in town is on, on a ten-year plan, pretty much, so I, I don't know, the Village District, which I also reside, was towards the end, um, uh, so it's not gonna be in the next few years anyways, so I can't speak to the condition of the road, but I don't think that's, that's really, the, the issues that were just brought up were really issues that either should have been or were addressed by the planning board.
Just two other comments, the, the parking lot drainage, the part, that parking lot is actually sloped away from Railroad Ave, so there's not gonna be water leaving the parking lot going to Railroad Ave, and then, the, the last comment is, uh, it would make sense for tenants in the apartments to go down two floors out the front of the building and walk, 'cause then, then there's a sidewalk from the front of the building, rather than going down Railroad Ave, now whether they're gonna do that, who knows, you know?
I can play that out real quick, so everybody knows. Um, yeah, so there is the potential here, if a tenant did, um, did come downstairs to leave, and they wanna go to the store, the store's over here, there is a door right here that faces Main Street, and this is a gravel road, so they can come out this door, which is actually the second floor of the building, and they can go, walk to the store, 'cause there is a sidewalk here, all the way up to the store, so chances are, instead of walking through the parking lot, they'll probably be using this front entrance that does face the front of the building, so that gives people an option, 'cause obviously, I wanted to give people access to the downtown, so if they come out this, um, gravel way here, they can get onto the sidewalk and have access to downtown, or up to the town hall, and as John said, all of this water pitches away, it goes into the swale, and then it's treated, and then this pond slows it down, so basically, there's zero runoff from this point, and we are gonna pave this portion of Railroad Ave as part of my project, um, I agreed to pave part of the town road, um, so that'll clean that up, uh, if we got some extra pavement, we will happily fill all those potholes, but that'll probably take a whole truck, 'cause you're exactly right, railroad's in poor condition.
Mr. Askey, when, when you're hot-topping the railroad end, are you proposing that you're going to be completing Railroad Ave from where it's, uh, partially paved right now?
Yeah, we're, this is all-
Where the railroad tracks used to go, that's not paved.
Yeah, if you look at, at this plan, my property line is right here, so I'm paving Railroad Ave over my property line, I'm gonna pave this part of Railroad Ave.
Because now we're going, you, you heard me say that that's a, it's an accident waiting to happen.
Yeah, it, it's, you know, Railroad Ave's tight, I, I agree, it's tight, so, we've, we've widened this, so it's easy to get in and out, so there's no visibility issues here, actually, the planning board made me take out these two spots, because we dealt with that, the, the field division here, so it's a nicer sweep, and it's, it's, the aisle width is compliant with the zoning, um, and that, and that was something that we, we definitely talked about, and now we have lighting, so that makes it safer, the lighting fills this whole area, so now people can see, 'cause I don't think there's, uh, I don't know, there's a street light. Yeah, so there's a street light down here, but now this would take care of this portion of, you know, Railroad Ave, so, we try to do our best with that, and, um, and then obviously, yeah, people can walk, they can certainly walk, they don't have to take their car if they need to go to the store, um-
They would, yeah.
Yeah, that would make sense, actually.
Yeah, I don't think-
So, at this point, pedestrian access, uh, on that street without a sidewalk would be restricted just to my family?
To which street, what are you talking about?
Railroad Avenue. In other words, it, it, because of all these solutions you have for your tenants, the only piece of, people be affected by Railroad Avenue would not be me.
Affected, what?
I think what he's saying is-
Without sidewalk, without a sidewalk in a busy street, that's what I'm saying.
Right, we're-
Oh, now you, there is a sidewalk, isn't there?
There's a small bit of sidewalk next to the corner, uh, alongside, it's about this wide, and it's behind a granite curb, and it's, it's probably about thirty feet long, and it goes from Main Street up to the garage of the first house on Main Street, there's nothing on my side of the street, no sidewalk.
I got you, yeah, 'cause I noticed some kind of curbing and stuff here as I come around the corner, and then there's curbing here, right?
And I'm not even sure if that's public or private, 'cause I have butted Railroad Avenue directly.
Yeah. Yeah, so basically, yeah, I don't think a lot of pedestrians would be using that. They would probably go right to the sidewalk.
Like I suggested, my family would be the only ones using it.
Oh, yeah.
Seems we, we're the singular people that are affected by this.
The sidewalk there is a sidewalk that my grandmother put in 70 years ago. And that's a day when the drainage used to stop every few times a day, too.
Yeah, I'll get on one other thing, leaving aside the Railroad Ave problems. If we assume for a minute that you actually have enough parking during the summer for proposed use, what's going to happen come winter? I am not seeing any place in this plan for you to put the snow. And I am not seeing that you've got enough extra spaces that you can afford to use any of them to snow piles.
That's a good question. There is some required, some required town plat notes that talked about where the snow would be stored. It says here that there's snow storage areas.
Yeah, if you look at the plan, all of these areas are designated snow storage. So you have this whole area here.
How wide is that?
What is it, eight foot? You're talking 10 feet. It's probably 10 feet. And then you have this whole area here, which is another probably 10 feet. This whole area here.
Doesn't that run on the north edge, run up against where the railroad tracks are?
Yeah, this is the railroad. I just want to make sure everybody can see this so it's clear. Everybody but the camera can see this. So this is railroad, the railroad tracks. And actually, there's a granite curb. I'm sure everybody who's skipped across here has jumped over that granite curb. This is a granite curb right here. So this, this line is a granite curb. So the tracks are actually over here, quite a ways away. So this whole area is vegetated. So as long, you know, this is ample room for snow storage, but obviously not even anywhere close to the tracks as far as a big snow bank and there's no visibility issues. And then we do have designated snow storage here, here. And this, actually, if we don't do this wall, which we may not have to do, we might just do a slope and then a nice granite wall here, like a hand stack, then we would even have more snow storage capability right here because this, we just thought it might be nicer with a gradual slope, a grassy slope, and just eliminate that wall. So we wouldn't have, because that would be an issue, like I know on your properties. What do you do, physically remove it, right?
I, we push it sideways because we took snow removal into account when we installed anything vertical. So they can all go to the end of the vertical area, but your end of the vertical area would be Main Street.
Yeah, so, and, yeah, so that's why we actually decided that we might just go to the slope there, make it softer and additional snow storage would be possible there.
And the snow storage area on the east end of that parking lot, you've got sufficient drainage to account for, yeah,
Here.
For that melt-off.
Well, that's actually that riprap hill.
Right.
So, you know, that, I think that would, that's designed to absorb it. I mean, obviously, if we can only put so much snow there before it goes onto your property. So if it was coming onto your property, at that point, you'd say, hey, Jeff, get the snow off my property. And then I would do that and then we would, you know, mitigate that situation, probably move it over here. But yeah, that's riprap, which actually I would think would be a good winter absorption material because the loam freezes, so that sheets off, but the riprap actually doesn't freeze. So it probably would have ability, you know, at that point, to absorb water.
We've included one of the schemes anyway. All snow shall be stored in the areas depicted on this plan. We have that and we're going to keep this in the records, too. Any other questions? Anything from the selectmen?
No, the planning board addressed all those issues as well, so you indicated that.
Anything else from the public? Yes, ma'am?
I, I'm sorry, silly Leefold. I've been following this case because I see writing to this building from my living room. And I believe that mixed use would be ideal. There are people looking for homes to start with. And I'd rather see some more living options for the community than manufacturing on the fifth floor. That's just my personal opinion. And I think it would be a good use of the building. So when it came up as an ordinance a couple of years ago, I was all for it. And I'd like to see the ordinance being used.
Any further queries from the board?
Yes, you know, the question I have, Chairman, is, you know, there's a statement here on March 2017, there was a change to the zoning ordinance. I cannot see that online because the latest one online is...
I don't know, for some, I've searched the whole file, but for some reason it hasn't shown.
I had that same conversation.
Would you like me to read you the text of the warrant article?
I'd rather read it.
Yes, please, because that's important.
Sure. Well, I might have a better copy if you just hang on a second. I had the same question and on Sarah's copy, it's showing up as a on page 97. Just the ordinance has been amended in 2017 to provide X. But on the copy I found online, it wasn't there. My page 97 printed out, there was nothing on it. But this is the warrant and the first page of the sample ballot. I only have one copy of this, but you can see there's the zoning article there.
Okay, because the thing that's direct contradiction to this is page 49, and I'll read it. This is under the section, you know, special provisions. If buildings containing multiple dwelling units shall contain no more than six dwelling units per building. So I don't know how the technical regulations tie together, you know, that one plus this one. I'm just...
That's a fair point. That was noticed as an issue, that section, 8.1. I don't know what Jeff's application said regarding 8.1.
Because one contradicts the other one.
Sure.
Which is kind of strange.
This is coming in as a special exception to...
Yes, specifically to talk about that, Chairman.
Right, and I think what he's saying is, you know, I'm just looking, I think you're looking at a 2011.
No, I looked online on March 2016, so...
Sure, okay.
That's not the latest, yeah.
Just what section, 8.1?
Yes, it would be page 49 on the latest one. I just got it up online. I'll confirm that. Section 10, the next page, so. So it's a contradiction to the vote, you know, feels like.
Well, number 10 says...
Oh, no.
It's not great. Yeah, I see it there.
So...
So I don't know how the board would like to address that. If it was noticed as a request, did you treat it as a request for variance? Is that why the notice was written that way?
Nope, I just took it right at the right moment. It's a special exception from table 6.9, section 8.1.
Yes, and now I'm talking about section 8. But then there's, there's another section that amends something, and I'm not sure if it amends this, which is section 8, special, you know, division specifically. 8.1, point, 2.10 or it could be 8.1.10. There's a section there that, which I just read, buildings containing multiple dwelling units shall contain no more than six dwelling units per building. And if there's a non-permitted use, you know, a special exception cannot be granted only variance. But, you know, I'm not sure if, you know, this was properly amended right because there's a vote allowing dwelling units, multiple dwelling units. No, no more than one, you know, bedroom. So was the intent of the planning board, whoever made this recommendation, to change both? And wasn't done or was it, was it the intent to limit to six dwelling units?
Well, as I read the, I mean, as I read the warrant, it says that it's seeking to amend table 6.9 and section 11.32. 11.32 is the special exception criteria.
Yeah, there's nothing about section 8 and that should have been addressed.
Fully agreed, but it does, it does modify section, the table in 6.9 and it does indicate that multiple dwellings are permitted in C1.
Fortunately, it complicates matters. You know, I'm used to reading a lot of regulations and this happens often and you have to go to three separate places. Sometimes one of the three is wrong.
I don't think it complicates anything. I mean, the amendment says clearly that in the C1 district, multiple residential units are permitted. So I think what that section is saying is if it's not in the C1, then it's six units max. So I don't, I mean, I think it's, I think it should be corrected or clarified, but I don't, I don't think it, I don't think it changes this application at all.
I'm just looking to see if there is...
I mean, I think it should be amended in the future to say, that section should say, except for C1, where multiple dwelling units are permitted by special exception.
I'll note that the definition of dwelling multiple or multiple dwelling, according to page 7 of your zoning ordinance, says a building or portion thereof used, designed for, containing three or more dwelling units, including apartment houses, apartment hotels and flats, but not including motels, boarding houses and hotels. So based on that definition coupled with the 6.9, I would say that that, by definition, a multiple dwelling includes an apartment house and the indication that it's permitted in C1.
Yes, and it's amended, but...
So quite a fair point regarding, and some, certainly a housekeeping related issue.
I think we all agree that 8.10 has to be amended.
I, yeah, I can't tell you what to do with your ordinance.
I want to do it, you see?
You know, I mean, I don't know what to, what to tell you about that.
That's pretty clear right here. This was a copy of the warrant. It says a U.N. favorite modification, table 6.9, section 11.32, the law's for zoning ordinance to allow residential use in the mill district. Question mark.
Yeah.
Residential use will only be allowed by special exception. Comma, have no more than two bedrooms per unit. Two parking spaces allocated per unit. And that residential use, units are not allowed on the ground floor or basement floors of the mill buildings, which are meant to be maintained as commercial use to create a mixture of uses within the mill district. The amendment is proposed by the Lawrence Building Board. This was, I don't remember when we voted on this.
Last year.
Last year?
So it may be as...
This is a copy that we were given and it's been... So I mean, that brings up a couple of other issues. I mean, we're back to the parking again.
And that...
Two per unit.
Right. I've, I've always said that there's supposed to be two per unit. And there's 40 spaces for the residents. I mean, I think that in terms of 8.1, addressing no more than six units, I mean, maybe the solution to construe that ordinance is what Mr. Krebs suggests, which is to say that 8.1 is there to address multiple dwellings outside of the C2 district. But table 6.9 clearly says multiple dwellings are permitted in C1 and multiple dwellings are defined as anything over three units, including apartment buildings. So I think we're covered.
Under 6.9?
Under...
Yep.
Under 6.9 and the criteria for the special exception.
8.10 has to be amended somehow.
It'll be next year, yeah. What's that with that?
But in terms of the parking, I...
As a special exception, we can't make, we can't make it into a law.
Sure.
We can make special exceptions, but it's an area with acreage, mostly, like the bank on Oak Street. Things of that nature. They had the acreage, but you couldn't use it because of the gully behind. So there was a special exception.
And this is, I mean, this is what the ordinance says and this is how you've chosen to address through the special exception process. This is how you've chosen to entertain these types of, you know, proposals. So we've just, we've made every effort through the planning board sessions as well as with the planning consultant to address all the concerns of the planning board, which was noticed and open to public comment as well. So that whole process involving, you know, stormwater and other, other concerns which are valid were considered by the planning board in approving this. And then the next step, based on the way you've structured it, is that you come here and say, the planning board has approved this. We don't think there's any health, safety or welfare concerns. In fact, we think things will be improved in...
I don't want to put on a spot or anything, but in land use. Would you agree that maybe we have the authority to use 6.9 as your requesting tool for this process instead of 8.10?
Well, the notice reads the way it reads, so I don't, I don't want to craft your motion for you. I don't know, Mr. Hinsman, if you want to chime in.
All right.
Mr. Krebs has been involved quite a bit in this. What do you, what do you think?
Well, as I said, I think there's a, I think the ordinance should be amended next year to say that the, that the six-unit limit doesn't apply to the C1. But that's, that's, I think, I think the, the clear, the intent of this zoning amendment, as it was written and voted on at March 2017 town meeting, was to allow multiple dwelling units in the upper floors of the mill buildings and the buildings in the C1 district, which is exactly what this applicant is trying to do. So I mean, I think, you know, if you feel as though he meets the criteria for a special exception, then I think it should be considered and granted.
And I have to say something for the applicant also because he's been there beyond a year. He's owned the building for some time. And all of a sudden tonight, you're going to run into a roadblock. If we go strictly by what the book says here. I'm not an attorney. I'm an accountant at the postmaster. That's about all I was. For a long time, I was a uncommissioned dummy, a non-city delivery postmaster. We had no delivery. Everybody came to the post office, they didn't mail. So we, I don't know, gentlemen. I need some advice.
I don't know if we can amend the notice. It's, unless it went out, I think it seems to me we have to vote up or down on...
Yeah, you know, I... It's conflicting. There's two segments here in 6.9 and 8.10 that really conflict with each other. six nine and eight ten, that really conflict with each other. But the request really has been right along for a multiple-use dwelling. It wasn't for five or six units, it was two, two floors. And I've had my concerns, and they were to address by Mr. Ballen. And, you know, that's Railroad Avenue, that's, that's a problem. I live right in front of him. I'm not an immediate ardent, but I, and when Mr. Bluen called me, I walked out, and I didn't take my car down, you know, it's that close. Uh, it, it's, that, that is the urgency that I see in this. The number of people residing in there was never, a big concern with me in many, many ways. So, uh, we're doing a disservice to this gentleman that has pursued whatever he's been told to do. He's been to the plan, he's been to the planning board time after time. And now he, I, I suggested to him a couple of weeks ago, he should probably have some legal advice with him tonight, and he did bring the, a legal advisor with him. And, uh, Mr. Shabbat?
Chairman. We have the vice chairman of the planning board here, and he will make a recommendation to the planning board chair that the housekeeping issue that we, that was brought up here will be taken care of. Did I say that correctly?
Well, John, I'll bring it up that needs to be addressed, sure. I, I, I can't guarantee it'll be taken care of, but I'll, but I'll bring, I'll, I'll make sure, I'll make sure that it's brought to the chair's attention. Sure.
Well, the legal advisor for the planning board is here tonight, right? I mean, uh...
Yeah, I, I, I would agree with John. I mean, I don't see any reason why that, that, that section of the zoning ordinance shouldn't be amended. So, yeah, I, I would agree. That'll be done.
I just don't want to hamstring anything. You know, we don't want to, we want a problem between the, uh, the CBA that most communities and mistakes seem to have, because they can't read, I guess, can't read English. You're gonna try French? I'd do pretty good French, I guess. But, uh, you just want to do the same, the right thing. And you get, uh, you know, you're getting a butter tonight that really has a concern. I know about that, that concern. I had a brother that was handicapped, too, you know, and one time I feared for him when he walked out the streets. And he has one in a, in a wheelchair. It's, it's a deep concern. So, uh, we want to do the, the right thing. We want to do much right for the public. But being here all my life, I, I also know that there's a time where times change. That's not a cotton bond anymore. I remember it was a cotton bond, where a chute, that would chute the, the cotton into the mills. You know, that's a long, long time ago. Uh, the, someday they'll take down the paint, I guess. I don't know what. That's gonna be there forever. That's a headache, that's a hard. But that's something the selectmen to handle. I'll, I'll be with you someday with that one, too. But I wish I was younger, that's the only problem with me. Age catches up here. Well, if you want us, if you want us to proceed, I'm willing to do that, because I think we have enough legal advice here tonight. We have two attorneys. We have an attorney that also on the planning board is with us. And you have the, the gentleman that I respect a lot, because of his opinions. And I've argued with him, too, a few times, believe me. And I did not come back to the board, but I promise to. Were I twenty years younger, I would have. But not as, not at eighty, at seventy, sixty, maybe I would. So if we're ready to vote, this is what we've been voting on, we're voting to grant the requested, the requested, uh, let's put eight tenths of that here. The request is to grant a special exception that's provided in the request in table six nine and section eight one, which will include Exhibit A from the chief of the fire department, and exhibit, which will address the fire suppression system, which is part of the night, which is very serious. And section B, which will, uh, for the warrant, your district problem. It's, it's a thing that we have it in writing. That's no problem, right, Mr. Epsom?
I have no problem.
No problem at all. And, uh, a yes vote will grant those requests, and no vote will deny it. And you should be giving me a reason why you are voting yes or no. Okay? That's a requirement from the Board of Appeals members. Mr. Shabbat, or do you vote?
Yes, and I'll give you the reasons. Number one is planning board, uh, planning board approved. It's better than what we have there now. It's ADA approved. I think it's, it's a, it's good for the town. I, I think it's an overall exciting project. And I want to commend you on the presentation. It's one of the better ones that I've seen since I've been on the planning board. My vote is yes.
Mr. Chairman, my vote is yes, and the, and the reason is, um, I think that the, the building, um, has some specially unique properties that make its compliance in highest investments difficult in almost any circumstance. And I think that the applicant has, um, spent many hours consulting with the planning board, trying to come up with the, the best use, uh, with the, with, for the, the property, and I think that, um, the proposed use of the property will benefit the, uh, the town, and perhaps bring some economic vitality to the downtown. So for those reasons, I say yes.
Mr. Fosch?
I'm going to say no. And I'm, no reason is, he answered all my questions, except I still think we have a safety issue that's been totally unaddressed. We've got family over there. And secondly, I'm still not convinced the Hawkins anywhere is near correct. That's the only issues I've had. You addressed everything else to a point that I'm happy. If we could find a resolution of them, I'm on board. Until then, I'm going to say no. But thanks for a nice job.
Mr. Heaven?
I vote yes. Um, I, same, I feel that it's been an improvement to the building. People need a place to bring around people to Rollinsville. Nice town. Been there all my life, like Joe has. And I'm, I think you've done a wonderful job on what you've done so far, and hopefully everything will addressing all the issues we have. And I also understand what Mr. Fosch said about the, the safety issue. I certainly do. And if all those issues are addressed, then I'm, so be it.
Mr. Kowat votes yes. And I'll tell you why. I'm very concerned about Railroad Avenue. I wish, I hope you could do something with that. Maybe as the owner of the property, when you're hiring the, uh, if the people to pave your rear area, maybe they can put, redress, re-improve Railroad Ave somehow. There's really only one piece of property back there that you can't reach. The one in the corner is where my grandmother lived. So I, I know a lot about that, that, that curving has been there for seventy years. The family put it in. In fact, I did a lot of the work in building that garage that's there. The up property was, uh, Mr. Ballen's property was, was nothing. He just took, took it over and remodeled it and renovated it, and he's been my neighbor for so long that I wouldn't be around if he didn't save me from when I fell out of the ladder one time. A few things that we've done together. I, uh, he flowers me out every so often. I maybe I should recuse myself for that. But being with Bluen so long, it was almost like Daymart having the mills downtown, when we had five forty-wheelers down, forty-foot wheelers down there, and that was a safety mess. But we were bringing a million dollars a year in the post office over here, and nobody would believe it. And, uh, Bluen did that. Bluen saved the post office over here, too. But his people did walk from the front. They would walk out of the front. They never walked from the back, because it wasn't paved. And the tracks were still there, I think, in those days. So if you can address that issue somehow, I'm hoping you will, because the exhibit here and the conversations are all in tape. If you can improve that area and make it a little bit for, better for Steve Junior to go out in his wheelchair, and then I can, once in a while, hear him, "Hi, Joe," you know? That would be the problem. So if you can do that, it's not a cotton mill anymore. It's gone through a lot of renovations from the Truman Plan, and we used to, after World War Two, when we, you said, drive railroad cars in there with powdered eggs, that we were sending over to Europe to feed the people in the, in Britain. And then we went to a, to our pool, and saw, they found their furniture there. Everybody in the village bought their furniture in the pools. And then, uh, it was dying, and then Morris and Carol and Bluen picked it up and revived it, big time. And they saved the post office at the same time, because the post office was supposed to be consolidated, believe me. Now, it'd be kind of sad to have a, a town that's so rich in history not have a post office, you know? It would be really hurt, I think, with, to be, people like us, I believe. So the, the vote is granted, a four to one vote. And I hope that you will wait and have, with the Sabbath to provide all this information. And before you go for your permits, you'll recuse to, uh, the decision. You're going back to the planning board now for side review?
No.
It's already been done.
It's already been done.
That's right, we did this back to, to you.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
A second?
At seven fifteen P M. A second, if you have a say aye.
Aye.